The public opinion, Westland City Council's order to give flood relief and flood like Council President Protem Michael Londo.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the ideal of the free and fair passage of all.
Mr. Clerk Rocco.
Councilman Godbout.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Protem Londo.
Present.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampi.
Present.
President Hertz.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We'll begin with questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow persons we recognize only the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from the council. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? All right, we'll close, input on the agenda, move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman McDermott. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Is there any dissent? Is there any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held December 5, 2022. Minutes of the study session held November 29, 2022. Approval of the 2023 through 2025 UAW successor collective bargaining agreement between the city of Westland and the local UAW. Terms of the agreement will be from January 1, 2023, through December 31, 2025. Approval of know before email and cybersecurity training subscription renewal through CDWG. The subscription will resume immediately and be effective for a one-year period in the amount of $5,920. Introduction of ordinance 260, an ordinance to amend the Westland City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 26, by adding Article 14 entitled Food Trucks. Approval to change the Committee for Disability Concerns name to the new name of Disability Advocacy Committee, otherwise known as DAC. Last item approved on the consent calendar today. Approval of request from Wayne Westland Relay for Life to waive the administrative city hall rental fee to host their annual kickoff event at city hall on February 9, 2023, between 5:30 and 8:30 p.m. The organization is requesting the nonprofit package deal of $375 be waived for this event. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item one. Confirmation of appointment of Kirsten Beckwith to the Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Authority, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, to fill an unexpired term with the term to expire February 5, 2028.
Have a motion by Councilman, or Protem Londo, supported by Councilman Godbout. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Deputy Mayor, do you have anything to offer?
Thank you, Council President. Just hoping that you move forward tonight with the recommendation. Actually, Ms. Berman is the one that was recommending this, so she may have a few things to add tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So Kirsten is the CEO of the Westland Chamber of Commerce. The Tifa EDC-BRA has traditionally had the president of the Chamber of Commerce serve on its board, so with the departure of Gretchen and Kirsten as her replacement, it just made sense. We also need a couple more members, so we're hoping to fill those out in the next upcoming months here.
Right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Councilwoman Sampi.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank Kirsten. She jumped into this role as a CEO just recently, and I've had a chance to work with her a little bit closer. I'm just wanting to thank her for her commitment in the city and staying around and just working really hard, so I just wanted to mention that, you know, before we move forward for the vote, so thank you again.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Signal dissent, motion carried unanimously. Kirsten, stand up, be recognized.
New business. Item two. Approval of proposed land division 1651 South Bennoy, east side of Bennoy, north of Palmer. Planning Commission recommends approval, and if approved, directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution. This is planning department number 2242A.
Motion by Protem Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Mo?
Sorry. Sorry, can I get the screen sort as well, please? Okay, thank you. Parcel here is zoned office business. It's approximately one and a half acres and contains a vacant medical office in this location here in the northeastern quadrant. The petitioner tonight is seeking approval to split parcel into two separate parcels. Adjacent property to the north here is vacant, it's zoned garden apartment. To the east is a church, it's zoned R5 single family. To the south is also R5 single family residential with a single family subdivision. And to the west in this area over here is CB4 with a auto repair facility. The master plan, future land use map indicates this parcel as neighborhood commercial and office services. And finally, petitioner proposing to split these two parcels will result in one parcel to the north, this area over here with a curb cut off of Bennoy, and then this resulting parcel B will have frontage and access off of Palmer. Both of these parcels continue to comply with minimum zoning requirements, and the planning commission reviewed this case at its December 6 planning commission meeting and is recommending approval. The petitioner is in the audience today and is able to answer any questions you may have, and so can I. Thank you.
Thank you. Does petitioner have anything they'd like to offer?
No, sir. My name's Robert Boychai. I'm the representing broker for the owner there. I just, if you have any questions or if there's anything I can help clarify, feel free to ask.
Well, let's see if they got any questions. I'm gonna turn them loose. Any, any questions from the maker? Any from the supporter? Councilman Hersberg.
Thanks. I'll be in support, but I'm just curious, do you have any future plans with either of these lots, the one on Palmer specifically, that you're looking to do this split for?
We do not. I, we've had recent discussions about potential uses for the property, one of them being multifamily, small multifamily development. Another one would possibly be another sister building to the current medical property there, probably most likely a single tenant building. And then there's also opportunity out there for possibly a retailer. So one of the things we'll do is market it for sale, and that's where my job comes into play, and kind of field the phone calls and inquiries as they come and see what would be the best fit.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll sit. All right, any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item three. Approval of purchase agreement with DTE Energy for the installation of decorative streetlights along Wayne Road from Warren to Glenwood. Amount not to exceed $1,208,532.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Godbout. Aubrey?
Thank you, Council President. We had a study session on this last week with the city council. This is to replace the wooden street poles along the Warren Road corridor with decorative street poles that'll mirror the ones that are out here on Warren Road right now currently, the black ones. I believe it's 119 replaced. There will be some remaining poles that we're gonna work to get a solution to replacing with Comcast and the other shared users of those poles in the near future. And we are proposing to use the street lighting fund to pay for this project.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the maker? Support? Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, I'll be in support of this. Just as some background, we're doing this with some money that was left over in the street lighting fund, and I think when we set that fund up, we were still in the process of converting everything over to LED, and we weren't too sure on the exact cost of it, which is why there was maybe some extra money leftovers. So I think these are gonna look nice. It's gonna be 166 new poles, and then next year, if there's any money left over in the fund as well, I think some of the council members had talked about identifying some spot, dark spots in town and trying to get some streetlights out there, so, and working within our budget to do that. So I'll be in support.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sampi?
Thank you, Council President. Throw the chair to Aubrey Berman. At the council's study session, we also talked about the poles, the decorative streetlights going to Joy Road, so I guess I would like to know the status of the additional costs, especially since we're going out and doing these already. I think there is consensus that we should just continue the project so it's fully completed. So I'd be curious to know if there's been an update on that.
I can get you the exact number on the difference of costs that it would take to do Joy, up to Joy Road as a part of this project. I know it was, it exceeded what we have in the street lighting fund currently, and then additionally, because in that stretch of land, there are so many shared poles, we kind of established that it would make more sense to work with DTE on a separate project where we could replace all of those kind of shared poles, all at one time when we're doing the decorative lighting on that part of the stretch of the thoroughfare.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, if you're able to share any updates and funding, Aubrey, that would be great, and then we can also share that out with the residents that might be interested as well.
All right, is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is a speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever is first. Is there anyone on my right?
Thank you, Council President. Heart and Westland City Council members. Emily Bowman from Westland. I want to remark on something I heard at a recent council meeting that caused me to pause and wonder about where we are as a community. As you all know, I have been to several council meetings and have spoken directly with many of you, and while we may not always agree, I have appreciated the effort and professionalism of each council member and attempts to hear from all the citizens in Westland. This remark I heard, not from any of you, was that the power had shifted in Lansing and this would be good for Westland. The reason why I paused was that this flies in opposition of what I, and I hope many who are listening, were taught in their government and civics classes. As reflected in the U.S. Constitution, the Michigan State Constitution, and the City of Westland Charter, each of them begins with a similar statement referencing who has the power: we, the people. As we end this year and get ready for 2023, I have a prayer that on a more regular basis we can come together to discuss really important, yet difficult topics at the city level, state, and nation. I pray that even if it is a topic that we are emotionally charged about, that we can agree that we must work through the discomfort or pain so that we can design solutions that hold all people on equal footing. I have always asked for and welcomed opportunities to discuss any topic so that each of us can ask questions and understand why we think a certain way. We may walk away still not in agreement, but we just might understand how a solution impacts each of us and how we can come up with a better answer than if we had not discussed and had asked each other questions. Back to the comment. If we really are a community, state, and nation of we, the people, then there was no shift in power in Lansing. All that sort of thinking does is perpetuate the us-them way of thinking, and that does not serve anyone well, especially in a city where the members of council and the mayor sit as a nonpartisan representatives of the people of this great city. It is not always the easy thing to do when we live in a society where there's so much talking at people rather than talking with people. As the city prepares for some new changes next year, I beg you to keep in mind the need to have people to represent us, be people who seek to understand all the residents of our city, not just those who come to council, those who speak up, and not just those we agree with. There has not been any power shift. We, the people of the city of Westland, we, the people of the state of Michigan, and we, the people of these United States grateful to Almighty God, government is instituted for our equal benefit, security, and protection. I wish you all a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and I look forward to 2023 with fresh vigor towards some really great discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon me. Anybody on my left?
Well, it's time, Mrs. Flying By tonight, I see in here, 'cause I was at a disability concern, hopefully. Did that name get voted in tonight? All right, I have something to be proud of. So years ago, I remember back in the 60s, we're not back in them days anymore. We call it respect everybody, and I'm very, you don't know how happy I am. I just want to make sure that that was, thank you for your support on that. Anyway, I also enjoyed the event of Westland's Christmas tree lighting. Also, I'm sorry, I missed the police officers' event tonight. Can't be at two places at the same time, but I want to say good luck to them. So they always have my support, and the fire department does, too. They don't realize sometimes, you know, they're, you can't expect to be everywhere. And the most important thing, you know, Christmas time is around the corner, and with mental health, I don't want to go there again, but it's important that, you know, check on your loved ones, check on your friends, check on your family, you just don't know. Let's be blessed, and one thing I want to say before I, for the end of the closure is Merry Christmas, and let's be kind to one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on my right? Sir?
My name's Wayne Lewis. I live off of Harvard. One of the issues we're addressing tonight is the building up of the Palmer Road over there. I live just north of Palmer. We have a house on the corner over there. It's been an issue since I moved in, four or five years now. One of the things that you pointed out on the map, that those are one-family or single-family dwellings. How extended is that family? We're talking several adults, several adults living in one house, six to eight cars of people in a two-bedroom house. They've moved a camper in, a camper beside the house. Last, last year, we got the council, or the housing, the housing people, we got them involved to come out and try to get the mess cleaned up. We've got rats. I've donated, gave the man hundreds of dollars of bait to put out. He has a pest control company that comes out monthly. They're gonna keep coming out. They make money to come out. They should be sued. They should be sued, because, give me a check, I'll tell you you got rats. They're not doing anything for them. They're not doing anything at all. Nobody's saying, "Clean up the mess. Get rid of the mess and you won't have the rats." They'll go away. He's putting out bait, I'm putting out bait. The rats are still there. They're all through the house, they're under the house, they're in the dilapidated garage that is not closed at all. They put a swimming pool up. The swimming pool never had any water, nothing to circulate the water. They put this swimming pool up less than a week after your housing officer, whatever he is, come out and gave him a timeline to get the mess cleaned up. He gave him, I think, 30 days. For a week and a half, they cleaned up, made a drastic change. As soon as he eliminated that date, it went right back to the same mess. They have, at this time, I think there's three trash cans sitting in front of the house. They're overflowing. They're parked all in the grass in front of the house. This is the worst-looking house, the worst mess in the neighborhood. The whole area right there. Dogs barking, loud music. I've tried to talk to them, tried to help. It doesn't do any good. It doesn't do any good.
All right, sir, your time's up. I appreciate it. Can I get you to stick around after the council meeting, deputy mayor?
Sure, I'm asking for help, who to go to. I don't want these people put out of their home.
Right.
I don't want anything other than have them clean it up.
We're gonna get with you right after this meeting. Thank you, sir. Anyone on my left? Come back to my right, sir?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rich Sutchen. I'm a neighbor of Wayne. I can vouch for everything he said, but I'd like to add a few other issues, too, that these people have been doing this since I've been here for 22 years, and they've been there for about 10, I think. And like he just said, they clean it up, and then three days later, it's right back in. I've been to the offices over on Marquette, and the people there, the basics, their hands are pretty much tied. So they get a slap on the wrist and threaten with some type of a fine, but they clean up before anything is done. So I just told, we went there today, and I told the girl, I says, "We need to talk, somebody here at the city council, who do we need to talk to to resolve this issue?" It's a small block, nine houses on the block, and property values are going down without their help. We don't need the help of these neighbors bringing it down even further. And something's gotta be done with these people. We don't want them, you know, they've been there, but they need to either straighten up or get out. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Again, we'll just have you guys stick around if you can, that way we can get all of your information, the deputy mayor, as well as legal. All right. Mo, did you have something you wanted to add? Oh, Mo's gonna, actually, Mo, right here, planning director, he's gonna get your information right now, so he'll just meet you out back and we'll get you all squared away, okay? Thank you, Mo, I appreciate that. All right, sir, go ahead. I was getting ready to come to the right, so there you go.
Good evening, all. How you guys doing today? I want to explain who I am today. First of all, I am the owner and founder of the Huckstep Group. I was born and raised in Detroit, Michigan. I moved to Miami, Florida about five years ago, got my education, and became a developer. Throughout the success of my five years, I've always thought about Michigan, the metropolitan area, and Westland. My mother has a house right now that she owns, two properties in Newburgh, right by the Myers. What I'm asking for you guys is some time to put me on the agenda to explain affordable housing, workforce, and workland safety with OSHA. I think Westland is underprived, and they have great land for affordable housing, workforce. The tax breaks are amazing, the incentives for other developers are great, and Michigan's places like, or Westland, are not, they're not utilizing the funds and the resources that we can help the community and the city. So I'm asking for further time in the future, the next agendas, give me a chance to put a presentation together for you guys, show you what the Huckstep Group can do for you guys that I'm doing in Florida. Right now, we're working on a $163 million project, affordable housing. We're using the government grants where I put 10 to 15% Section 8 in there, and the rest, regular housing, and it's growing. $163 million for a black minority is very slim to come by, and I want to bring that to Westland. So if you give me the opportunity, I promise you it'll be profitable. Thank you.
All right. I'll come talk to you after the meeting. Council meeting might not be the right mechanism, but we'll talk, okay? Excuse me, anybody on my left? Anyone on my right? Sure.
Hi, my name is Josh Powell. I'm a resident of Westland. I just, I had looked up, I reviewed the park presentation, it looks like a great park, but I was just wondering if anyone had given any thought to using any of the American Rescue Plan funds for a water tower, because I know that the city of Farmington Hills created two water towers which reduced their, their water bills an average of 15 to 20% per resident. So I just wanted to propose that and see if there's any discussion or research into that. That's all I have.
Is there anyone else in the audience? All right, I will close, citizen comments, and move to comments from the administration. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. The last gentleman that just spoke, I don't know, you were a plant by the city attorney, but he's been talking about that with us for quite some time, so we actually have been doing, looking into that and been getting some data on that, but that's a great thing to bring up, but we are, something that we are looking into, so. And then, Council President, I think you were gonna get with this gentleman, probably give him your hand, some contact numbers and stuff. Okay, great. And Mo's taking care of the folks out in the hallway that had the complaint. And with that, just wanted to thank council tonight for the study sessions, the two-long study sessions we had, and my voice is hoarse enough, so that's enough for me tonight, thanks. Everybody have a happy holiday and a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Anything from the attorney's office today?
I would just echo, I'd just echo, happy holidays, and I did, I do not plant people in the audience. Sometimes great minds think alike. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
As soon as he eliminated that date, it went right back to the same mess. They have, at this time, I think there's three trash cans sitting in front of the house. They're overflowing. They're parked all in the grass in front of the house. This is the worst-looking house, the worst mess in the neighborhood, the whole area right there. Dogs barking, loud music. I've tried to talk to them, tried to help. It doesn't do any good. It doesn't do any good.
All right. Sir, your time's up. I appreciate it. Can I get you to stick around after the council meeting, Deputy Mayor?
Sure. I'm asking for help, who to go to. I don't want these people put out of their home. I don't want anything other than have them clean it up.
We're going to get with you right after the meeting. Thank you, sir. Anyone on my left? Come back to my right, sir?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rich Sutchen. I'm a neighbor of Wayne. I can vouch for everything he said, but I'd like to add a few other issues too, that these people have been doing this since I've been here for 22 years, and they've been there for about 10, I think. And like you just said, they clean it up, and then three days later, it's right back again. I've been to the offices over at Marquette, and the people there, the basics is their hands are pretty much tied. So they get a slap on the wrist and threaten with some type of a fine, but they clean up before anything is done. So I just told, we went there today, and I told the girl, I says, "We need to talk somebody here at the city council. Who do we need to talk to to resolve this issue?" It's a small block, nine houses on the block. And property values are going down without their help. We don't need the help of these neighbors bringing it down even further. And something's got to be done with these people. We don't want them, you know, evicted, but they need to either straighten up or get out. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Again, we'll just have you guys stick around if you can, that way we can get your all of your information, the deputy mayor, as well as legal. All right. Mo, did you have something you wanted to add? Oh, Mo's going to, actually, Mo, right here, planning director, he's going to get your information right now. So he'll just meet you out back, and we'll get you all squared away, okay? Thank you, Mo. I appreciate that. All right. Sir, go ahead. I was getting ready to come to the right, so there you go.
Good evening, all. How you guys doing today? I want to explain who I am today. First of all, I am the owner and founder of the Hookstep Group. I was born and raised in Detroit, Michigan. I moved to Miami, Florida about five years ago. After my education, I became a developer. Throughout the success of my five years, I've always thought about Michigan, the metropolitan area, and Westland. My mother has a house right now that she owns, two properties in Newburgh, right by the Myers. What I'm asking for you guys is some time to put me on the agenda to explain affordable housing, workforce, and workland safety with OSHA. I think Westland is underprived, and they have great land for affordable housing, workforce. The tax breaks are amazing. The incentives for other developers are great, and Michigan's places like, or Westland, are not, they're not utilizing the funds and the resources that we can help the community and the city. So I'm asking for further time in the future, the next agendas, give me a chance to put a presentation together for you guys, show you what the Hookstep Group can do for you guys that I'm doing in Florida. Right now, we're working on a $163 million project, affordable housing. We're using the government grants, where I put 10% to 15% Section 8 there, and the rest, regular housing. And it's growing. $163 million for a black minority is very slim to come by, and I want to bring that to Westland. So if you give me the opportunity, I promise you it'll be profitable. Thank you.
All right. I'll come talk to you after the meeting. Council meeting might not be the right mechanism, but we'll talk, okay? Excuse me. Anybody on my left? Anyone on my right? Sure.
Hi, my name is Josh Powell. I'm a resident of Westland. I just, I had looked up, I reviewed the park presentation. It looks like a great park, but I was just wondering if anyone had given any thought to using any of the American Rescue Plan funds for a water tower, because I know that the city of Farmington Hills created two water towers which reduced their water bills an average of 15%, 20% per resident. So I just wanted to propose that and see if there's any discussion or research into that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? All right. I will close. Citizen comments, I move to comments from the administration. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. The last gentleman that just spoke, I don't know, you were a plant by the city attorney, but he's been talking about that with us for quite some time. So we actually have been doing, looking into that and been getting some data on that, but that's a great thing to bring up, but we are, something that we are looking into, so. And then, Council President, I think you were going to get with this gentleman, probably give him Joanne's contact numbers and stuff. Okay, great. And Mo's taking care of the folks out in the hallway that had the complaint. And with that, just wanted to thank council tonight for the study sessions, the two-long study sessions we had, and my voice is hoarse enough, so that's enough for me tonight. Thanks. Everybody have a happy holiday and a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Anything from the attorney's office today?
I would just echo, I would just echo, "Happy Holidays," and I did, I do not plant people in the audience. Sometimes great minds think alike. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We begin to ask council comments this evening with Councilman McDermott.
Well, good evening, and thank you, Council President. First, I want to start out by congratulating our officers who retired this evening. Officers Hernandez and Lee retired after over 20 years with the Westland Police Department, so I wish them all the best in their future going forward, and much success as they head out into retirement, right before the holidays, so it seems like a nice time to get in and be able to retire. And then I want to congratulate all of our newly hired and promoted officers as well, so congratulations to each of the new officers who started with the department and who have also been promoted. Ray, nice work with the disability, the newly Disability Advocacy Committee, so great job on the name change for everybody at the board, but you should, you should, and you're the one here from the committee tonight, so it's great to get a more inclusive name for the Disability Advocacy Committee. So thank you to everybody who made that possible as well. Just a few more things here, really excited about this new street lighting program that we're going to be rolling out here along Wayne Road. There was a lot of work put into that, so thank you to Aubrey Berman, thank you to everybody in the administration who made that happen. It's been, it's been a long time coming, and we're excited to see that. I want to thank Mr. Powell for bringing up the water towers. That's been something that a couple of us here on council have brought up over the years, and I know Councilman Hersberg's brought it up a number of times, and I think pretty much everybody in the council at one point or another has wanted to have that discussion, and I think it's something that's really warranted, not only Farmington Hills, but Northville, Canton Township. Livonia's exploring it right now as well, and any opportunity that we have to do something like that for water storage and potentially lower bills or something is worth having an in-depth conversation over, so thank you for bringing that to the attention tonight. As always, we're excited to have the opportunity to have a staffing study session and look at PD and fire staffing. I know it's the broken record that gets brought up here, once a meeting by somebody, but always, always happy to put that one in the conscience of everybody and know that that's something that we're all looking forward to doing here in the future. And then just a couple of other things. Merry Christmas to all who celebrate Happy Hanukkah, to all who are celebrating right now, and Happy Kwanzaa. Wish you all a joyous and happy holiday season with your family, your friends, whoever you get to spend it with. Just a quick shout out to my colleague, Council President Hart, but also former Councilman Care, and wishing you all a happy Festivus. I know that was something that Councilman Care brought up every year. If you celebrate the holiday at Festivus, you can join me on my council page at Councilman Mike McDermott. I will be doing my annual airing of the grievances. I will not be raining blows down upon anybody over a doll like Mr. Costanza did, but I wish you all a happy Festivus, and all a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah if you celebrate, Happy Kwanzaa, and enjoy your holiday season with your friends and family, and remember to treat each other with kindness and respect. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
You took the one thing I had to talk about. We'll go next with Councilman Hersberg.
Thanks, Council President, and thanks, Councilman McDermott, for bringing up an answer to that question about the water tower. That's something we have talked about, but not anything substantial. There still is a lot of unspent ARPA funds, and I hope we can have a study session, or maybe we can do a subcommittee and make some sort of council proposal on what to do with the rest of that money. And I'm also looking forward to having a thorough staffing study session. We had somewhat of one today, talking about the police department, but we need to go into a real deep dive on staffing and how this, these ARPA funds are going to be spent. And then I'll just thank Ray for all your work on your advocacy board, and wish you the best of luck next year with all your new members. And with that, I'll just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rukowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I too would like to thank retiring Sergeants Lee and Rodriguez for their long service and dedication to our city, as well as our great nation. Additionally, I'd like to congratulate Sergeant Gomez and Smith on their promotions, and welcome Officers Nope and Dyer to our police force. And I'm always very excited, and I know it's quite biased, and I apologize for that, but whenever I see strong females being able to join our police department, that just feels really special to me. There was a lot of great commentary this evening. Our study sessions went really well. I think we're really working towards some great solutions in our staffing, but I do think, you know, we need to take a look at that. You know, additionally, I'm very excited to see the DTE lighting project. I'm looking forward to it being extended in the future. You know, the original plan was to go to Joy Road, down Wayne Road, from Joy to Glenwood, but we, it got shortened. And, you know, as a frequent commuter between Warren and Joy, it is a, an area that really is underlit. I think with the amount of wiring and stuff like that, it's a little disheveled as well, and especially as we're, we kind of use that Wayne Road as the entrance into our shop-and-dine district, don't we? You know, if we were coming up, and, you know, I think it'd be wise of us to try to make the entrance into our city as beautified as we can. So, you know, I look forward to seeing what we can do in the future with the lighting Very excited for Ray and the rest of his committee, Ms. Hunt, with the Disability Advocacy Committee. I like the rename. I think that's so great, and I am so happy to see you guys embrace your board and your commission and rename it and make it your own, and you do so many wonderful things, so thank you for your service. Congratulations. You deserve to celebrate that. And then, to close this evening, I just want to wish everyone a happy what you celebrate, Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Solstice. Mike, Happy Festivus. Shall you air your grievances heartily? But whatever it is, wherever your faith may lie, and whatever you do celebrate, though yours isn't mine and mine isn't yours, I think that, you know, this time of year, this season, is that we drive out the darkness to seek the light. And that's, however you do that, is wonderful. I celebrate that. I wish you nothing but good tidings and joy, and a prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Sampe.
Thank you, Council President. We're going to sound like a broken record, but we really do have the best police department around, and I'll stand by that. So wanted to give congratulations again to Officer Rodriguez and Lee on their years of service, and hopefully they do something fun and come back, and they tell us that they're enjoying their retirement, and they don't want to come back. I don't know, chief might have them back sometime soon, but wanted to give them, just a congratulations, the rank of sergeant to Officer Gomez and Smith. Welcome to Kaylee, and to Summer, to Westland. I agree, Councilwoman Rukowski, it's always great when you have strong females, and just the excitement in the room, just to see smiling faces and your family supporting you, so welcome to Westland. Thank you for choosing Westland, too. Congratulations to Kirsten. I know that she did leave, but Kirsten's done a good job as the CEO. She just jumped into the role recently, and on your appointment, so Kirsten, if you watch this back, congratulations on your appointment. Ray and Debbie for being here and representing your committee, so congratulations on the new committee. I think it is much more fitting, and I agree with you, Ray, I think that the way that we speak about, you know, individuals with special needs are just, I don't like saying disability in general. It's not a disability, you know, it's just differences, so. So congratulations, and thank you for being here. On December 8th, at 6:46 in the morning, there was a 15-year-old girl from John Glenn who was struck by a vehicle while walking to school, and I really wanted to bring this up today because I think it's very important that we also have the power of prayer, but also that there's a GoFundMe page. The Westland Community News shared this, and I am praying for her. I'm a mom of a 15-year-old as well, and it hit me very hard. But I also feel, from a community perspective, if you have the means to donate, but mainly, please, be careful while you're out there driving as well, too. I mean, I think that, one thing I'm going to bring up here in my comments, is that we don't have enough crosswalks and the lights. I think it's very important, but please, please, please be careful and watch your surroundings, especially with those students in areas that are around schools. I think it's very important that we watch our surroundings much better. I wanted to acknowledge a Westland resident, Gina, from Westland Comments and WAAA, I'm sorry, WYAAA, I said that fast. She pulled together a donation drive for the homeless. She put some care kits together, and I was fortunate to donate to her cause as well. I saw it online and approached her to say, "What can I do to help?" So I just wanted to acknowledge her as a resident that was making a difference in our community, and just getting donations out there and keeping it here in Westland. Just a quick reminder, didn't get brought up, I thought it would get brought up, but you still can enter the All-American Holiday Decorating Contest, it's going on until December 26th. So you can, you can nominate a neighbor, a friend, or, you know, just someone that you know in Westland. There's three different categories, so best traditional display, most creative display, and most over-the-top display. So you can go on the website. I think it's really important that we share holiday joy this time of year, so if you see a nice display, you can go on there and nominate them. And then at the last meeting, I was speaking with a few residents about ARPA funding, and I do hope also that we have a study session soon. So I think that there's been a lot of different things that we've tossed around, but, you know, from sidewalks to roadway paving, additional lighting, I agree with Councilwoman Rukowski, that area of Wayne Road is, in my mind, it's, it's very dim, very, very dim. There's a lot of seniors in Caliday Park area and coming out, so I definitely would love to see that expanded out, and expanding our Parks and Rec Department as well. I think a lot of people have come to me and asked for additional rec opportunities, but our Parks and Rec Department is very slim. It's one person who does it all. So I definitely would love to see how that pans out, and then again, I talked about crosswalk areas as well. And then I was online, and I was seeing a couple different things talking about the City Hall project, but I wanted to thank Audrey and her team, as well as OHM, for all the efforts they put into the recent planning session. And just to kind of clarify, the city, or city council, we committed $4 million. It's not 12 million, so 4 million is coming from, you know, what we would say are ARPA funds, 4 million is coming from Wayne County, and 4 million is coming from Tifa. So it's in beginning stages. We definitely are opening this up with a survey, so the survey link, I believe, has been shared out. I actually did share it as well. I'll share it again, but please, please feel free to share your feedback. There's things you like, you don't like. I mean, things are not necessarily agreed upon. There's definitely room for improvement, so if you have feedback, please share. That's how we hear, I mean, that's how they're going to hear the feedback from our residents, so, again, please take that survey. And since this is the last meeting of 2022, I just wanted to close out the meeting and just say thank you for all your support. As you know, I'm a new councilperson. It was my first full year in council, so I'm blessed for the opportunity. I know next year is an election year, and, you know, I just reflect on everything that I accomplished this year, and I think I found my calling. I'm definitely happy and very thankful for all the support of residents, and I'll be here next year, so, you know, if there's anything that anyone needs, you can always reach out to me, Councilwoman Melissa Sampe. My phone number's on there, my email's on there, you can inbox me, I'm always available to chat. So till then, everyone have a wonderful holiday season. Again, whatever you celebrate, hopefully you're in abundance of joy and health, and we will see you in 2023.
Thank you. Councilman Gobert.
Thanks. I'd just like to congratulate Kirsten on her appointment and thank her for agreeing to serve on the EDC, the Tifa, and the Brownfield Redevelopment Boards. She, you know, has been at the chamber almost about a year at this point in time, and she's done a tremendous job coming up to speed and taking over rather unexpectedly in the, and she's, I think her first, within her first 30 days was Blues Brews and Barbecue, and it was, it was a great learning experience for her, and, but she stepped up and did a great job, and I'm confident that she'll do a great job on the Tifa, Brownfield, and EDC Board. And then I hope everyone enjoys the holiday season, whatever tradition you and your loved ones choose to celebrate. Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and I hope everyone has a safe and Happy New Year. Thanks.
Thank you. Protem Londo.
Thank you, President Hart. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to our new, two new police officers who were sworn in tonight. Where are they at here? Kaylee Nope and Summer Dyer, and also congratulations to the new, newly promoted sergeants, Sergeant Derek Gomez and Sergeant Kevin Smith. Those promotions were, were in part due to two retirements, to Sergeant Eric Rodriguez and Timothy Lee, so thank you for their dedicated service to our community as they enter retirement. We had a great study session that was talked about before, before tonight's meeting, addressing some of our recruitment and retention issues within the police department. My hopes that we can continue to get our department to full staff, we can continue to recruit incredible officers to our department. I want to recognize a few of the union board members that are in the audience. We have our Westland Police Officers Association president in the audience, Tim Sumter, board member Summer Shofflin, and of course, everybody knows Margie Kelly. But I know we have similar needs in our fire department, we have a fire department official here as well, so I'm looking forward to sit down with them soon and get those, get those issues addressed ASAP. We also had the UAW contract on tonight's agenda, so I want to thank the city's negotiating team and the UAW Local 174's negotiating team for coming up with the unanimous agreement. It's our supervisor union, and they all do a great job on our city on behalf of the residents. Last two things, I want to also congratulate Kirsten Beckworth, excuse me, on her appointment to the Tifa, EDC, Brownfield Authority. She's, as Councilman Gobert and others have stated, she's done a great job as the chamber president. I look forward to her service on this board as well. And then as we gather this holiday season, please keep your, keep the family of Aleah Wiley in your hearts and prayers as she continues to recover from that devastating hit-and-run accident over on Newburgh that Councilwoman Sampe mentioned, and if you can do so, please donate to the GoFundMe for the family. And I'll just close by saying, I hope the season fills you with faith, renewed hope, and good health that will last you a lifetime. Have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. I'd like to first thank Council President Protem Londo for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and also like to congratulate our, all of our police officers, the ones that retired, those who are promoted, and welcome to the new ones to the force. So an outstanding police department, and welcome, again, to the new ones. Margie Kelly will steer you in the right direction, so make sure you get on with her. You know, I think we've talked about water towers before, and I've done a lot of, I would say some fair research into it, and a lot of the feedback I get is dicey, and it's not as rosery, rosy. It's the concept of a water tower is, you know, you buy a large bulk of water off peak hours, you fill your water tower, and when it comes to peak hours, then you would discharge, go ahead and save yourself the peak rate. But one thing I'm also reading is, when you find a way to spend less with the water authority, the water authority just gets creative in how they charge you water and moving forward. So I would be really apprehensive about creating a mechanism that could be usurped quickly simply by the GLWA deciding to change their rate structure. That impacts all of the communities involved, especially in a water tower, anywhere from the $2 to $6.5, $7 million range. So I'd be interested to hear all the feedback, I really would. So I'm not coming in opposed to it, I'm coming in a little skeptical, but hopefully we look at all of these things if we're really going to look at it, and that is a large chunk of money, and if we're going to do an ARPA fund on that, it's pretty much, I think it exceeds what our current unmarked balance would be anyway. So we would have to be creative in our financing as well. So it's not that simple. That's why I'm sure they're working very diligently on it. So thank you. Beyond that, I'd like to wish you all, again, a great holiday season. It's that time of year where we can go ahead and just put everything aside, enjoy our family, enjoy our friends, and be thankful for what we have. I'm thankful for all of you, and I'm thankful for all the comments. It's usually positive, sometimes a critique, but I take those well, so I really appreciate it. Have a blessed holiday season. Is there a motion to adjourn?